Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public here and listening. I will now call this August 10th, 2021 business meeting to order. We will begin tonight by acknowledging that buildings within Minneapolis Public Schools are located within the traditional homelands of the Dakota people. Minnesota comes from the Dakota name for this region, Minnesota Mocoché, translating to the land where the waters reflect the skies and cloudy waters. MPS recognizes the original peoples of this place and is committed to make ongoing efforts to educate the community about the relationships that Dakota people have to this area, both historically and today, as they remain here in their home. Thank you. I want to acknowledge that while it is clear we are not close to the end of the pandemic, as many of us would like, the fact that we are here again gathered in this room together does mark another step forward in navigating our way through it. On behalf of the board, I want to again express my deepest thanks and appreciation for the healthcare workers, public health officials, scientists, and every person who has worked and continues to work to keep us safe and healthy. For the rest of us, please listen to the experts. Please keep doing your part. Get vaccinated as soon as you can, wear a mask, follow the current guidance. If you need motivation, think of our students. Remember that the more we can do as adults to reduce the spread and stay healthy, the better off their school year will be. And finally, before we get into our agenda, for anyone speaking tonight, including members of the public during public comment, please remember to speak directly, clearly, and loudly into your microphone. For the benefit of all of us, but especially for our interpreters, and for those using closed captions, and for those who normally rely on lip reading to help them understand, we really do need to project our voices to be heard through masks. And if you do briefly remove your mask to speak, please remember to put it back on properly after you've spoken. Thank you. Clerk Polly, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Dr. Allison.
Here.
Dr. Ali.
Here.
Dr. Suriel.
Here.
Dr. Ennis.
Here.
Dr. Jordan.
Here.
Dr. Caprini.
Present.
Dr. Polly's here, Chair Ellison.
Here.
Student Representative Gabor Meskell.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next, we will approve our agenda for the evening. Director Arneson, will you please move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our agenda's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. We have an approved agenda. Director Polly, will you please move approval of the minutes before us?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes as presented for the June 15th, 2021 board meeting have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. That motion carries and the June 15th minutes are approved. The next item is public comments. Throughout the pandemic, while meeting virtually, we accepted public comments by voicemail in advance. As we now return to in-person meetings, we will continue to offer that option, submitting a comment by voicemail, as well as resume the practice of hearing comments in person. First, we will hear the comments on voicemail. I'm now ask the staff to please play those comments.
students whom you academically abuse during the daytime during the school year. Extended comments at newsalameducation.blogspot.com. I'm going to monitor the situation month by month, but for the foreseeable future, intend to continue to call in my comments and refrain. From public meetings, the nation has been so eager to return to putative normalcy that we're in a situation again where the variant is out of control. At least 30% of the nation remains unvaccinated, and this is your fault. Citizenship is created by certain institutions, the family, the church. Public education has a huge role in that. And the fact that it's so terrible at the Minneapolis Public Schools and locally centralized school districts throughout the nation gives us what we've got despite the many admirable features in your comprehensive district design. Your academic program will not advance at all, given the jargon-infested putative plan that you have in place. You do not have the academic decision-makers with the intellectual approach, the academic training to make those decisions, so that's where we are for the foreseeable future. And I will continue to distribute my book, tell the truth on my blog, and do everything I can to induce you to make of the Minneapolis Public Schools the academic entity that it should be and should be at the core of every localized school district. If you made of the district that kind of entity...
My name is Amy Simso Dean. I currently have two students in Minneapolis Public Schools, and I am speaking on behalf of one student who worked on this statement with me. While we believe the current redistricting was done with good intentions, we would like the school board to disclose to families and students why no placement appeals were approved, even in cases where a licensed professional said placement would directly impact mental health and academic performance, and why no waitlist placements will be honored even in cases where there is currently room in a school, and why there was no honest effort to prioritize sibling preference as had been stated. In other words, why were parents and students put through these drawn-out processes when there was no good faith chance of approval? Thank you.
Next, we will hear from those who signed up to provide comment with us here tonight. As staff projects the speaker list and our first speaker comes to the podium, I will remind all of us of the public comment guidelines. Comments should be no more than two minutes each, must not mention identifiable information about individual staff or students, and must not include profanity, insults, or threats. And finally, since it's been a while, a reminder that this is an opportunity for us to hear from you, and we will not be responding in the moment to comments or questions. First name on the list, Fiona Carlson.
Hello, I'm Fiona Carlson. I'm going into the year at Southwest High School. Because I saw a form earlier, I thought it was a question. I should be included in our classes. Last year, I took AP United States History, and I couldn't help but notice the lack of minority representation in our school curriculum. There are so many different communities overlooked in history, indigenous groups, black people, Chinese-Americans, and so many more. Each of these groups are deserving of representation and acceptance. However, my focus today is the inclusion of queer history in the school curriculum, or rather, the lack of it. I have been a student in the Minneapolis Public School District for 11 years, since I was a kindergartner. In all that time, I have not seen one mention of the LGBTQ community. We are excluded from every class. It is possible this is the reason that I've never been all that into history. In fact, social studies or history has almost always been my worst class. The material simply doesn't hold my interest. It was only when I began my own research on queer history that I really started to get into that class. Suddenly, I was able to see myself in all these incredible historical figures, and I was able to make a direct line from the past to myself, and it intrigued me. To put it simply, history was suddenly interesting, and this change in attitude impacted my life more than I ever thought possible. I found myself wanting to speak up more in class, to add more to the conversation, to make sure everyone knew about this one really cool thing I just learned. I think my own reaction demonstrates clearly enough the need for a more inclusive curriculum. When students see themselves represented in their studies, the class is so much more likely to hold their attention. Right now, in an increasing number of states, the GOP is pushing a number of laws to prevent the teaching of queer history in public schools. These "don't say gay" laws, already passed in Tennessee and Montana, will erase our history. They will diminish the struggles and triumphs of every single queer person who long for a better life. They will prevent students from getting a well-rounded, complex education. I say let's not that happen. Let's take action now and make queer history curriculum implemented throughout all grade levels and at all schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Maggie Walker.
Hello, my name is Maggie Walker, and today I'd like to talk to you about adapting LGBTQ history curriculum at Minneapolis Public Schools. So I've been going to Minneapolis Public Schools for 11 years, and never once have I heard or seen, learned about anyone like me, someone who's queer. And I want to know how this happened. I want to know who is responsible for that, because in 2011, the school board passed a resolution sort of affirming its need to support LGBTQ plus students. And that was about a decade ago, so I want to know where is the LGBTQ history curriculum in our schools? For queer people, the detriments of not having this is clear. They don't see themselves in their education, they can't find role models, and they check out. And our community loses these bright and unique perspectives. For straight and cis people, it's also clear. They can't understand homophobia without knowing the history, and they can't understand their own biases. And we all lose out when we don't get to learn about the queer black figures in the Harlem Renaissance, and we don't get to learn about queer women's contribution to the women's movement. I think a curriculum, it needs to show LGBTQ people from diverse genders, diverse races, and socioeconomic backgrounds. It needs to show that LGBTQ people and queer history don't just exist for themselves, but impact our entire community. And this is a personal story that happened to me today. So my little brother came home crying from camp because the boys at his camp were calling him an efsler, because no one ever told them not to do that, and no one taught them, and now my brother is crying, and I'm crying for my family and for people like me. And you need to institute our history and our values so that we know that we are valued and that people don't say these things anymore and know that it's wrong. Thank you for your time.
Cecilia Diaz. Bea Bendah.
As members of this school board, you've been given a sacred trust in this last year during the pandemic, the long-term health of both students and staff. You did the right thing last year, hiring the HVAC engineers, CFI, who repeatedly supported the ASHRAE standards in their building ventilation reports. Those reports are arduous to get through, yes, but as a master's-prepared nurse, I was prepared for this. I've had decades working with hospital administrations on problem-solving. For those of you not aware, ASHRAE stands for the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers. This is their professional group, and they acknowledged that this was an aerocized problem in March of 2020. I'm here to plead to you, to your sense of duty, to target a significant portion of the American Recovery Fund, Recovery Plan funds toward catching up on the decades of Minneapolis deferred maintenance on the buildings and ventilation processes. These were clearly identified in the CFI reports that are on our website. There is one machine at Hiawatha that is old as I am, 65 years old. It should have been replaced in 1985. It's still their functioning unit. We have a problem. Franklin was due for updates of theirs in 2013. That's also been put behind. Minneapolis has never had excess funds, and I understand that, but this is a time where we can use those funds, just as Washington DC has done, to take care of their aged buildings that are not healthy, that probably contribute to our 10% asthma rate in students, and staff reports of chronic cough symptoms that went away, interestingly, while they worked from home last year.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy Mink.
Good evening, Superintendent Graff, Chair Ellison, board members, and the public. My name is Amy Mink, and I'm an MPS parent and teacher in the district with a serious underlying health condition. Now with the more contagious Delta variant and the fact that young children cannot be vaccinated, I'm very concerned about sending my own children ages seven and 11 back into the schools without assurances from the district about their effect, about an effective mitigation strategy. Just yesterday, former FDA Commissioner Dr. Scott Gottlieb warned, quote, "That schools may need to begin the year with heavier mitigations in place, like mask-wearing, testing, physical distancing, and gathering through pods." I am grateful to have requirement of masking for all. However, I'm left with questions regarding what other mitigation strategies Minneapolis will implement based on current back-to-school communications. Will students be potted? Will students and staff have access to free and equitable PPE? Will testing and contact tracing be used? Will students be quarantined if identified as a close contact? Will students, classroom teachers, be required to simultaneously teach in person and quarantine students at the same time? How will lunch respect social distancing requirements if all students are back in school? And how soon can we expect to make a full, for you to make the full plan available to the community so people can make timely, informed decisions for their families? As previously stated, I am a teacher in the district, and my union speaks for me. You have allowed the district to mitigate, marginalize, and minimize our workplace concerns through this pandemic in a way that has left teachers and parents without answers. Is the district going to engage in serious talks to provide assurances of one consistent level of safety? Will the district provide a financial safety net that will allow my coworkers to make the right choice and stay home when sick? How will I quarantine with my sick child when I do not have enough sick leave to cover a lengthy COVID illness? What assurances do I have that my job will be there for me if I'm forced to quarantine multiple times and exceed FLMA limits? Please do not put me, my coworkers, and my children at undue risk. Safety is planned. Please inform us.
Thank you. Morris Callahan.
All right. Hello there. My name is Morris Callahan. I'm a sophomore attending Southwest High School this upcoming year, and I've been taking a few classes at Edison this summer. I'm here today to express my concern about the upcoming school year. After a compensative redesign, sorry, after a comprehensive redesign uprising in our city and a pandemic, students have been through quite a lot. Yet this school year already feels like business as usual. We have an opportunity now to change systems and structures to create the safest and most comfortable schools possible while also engaging students in learning. I spent the entire last year online. I was happy to be safe, but as an extrovert and only child, this was very difficult. I've been looking forward to seeing my friends and teachers in real life. As we get closer to the school year, there are still so many unanswered questions. I've had teachers reach out in support, but even they don't know what safety protocols will be in place this year. In addition to physical safety, I'm concerned about students' emotional well-being. We need mental health supports now more than ever. My mom is a single parent who works full-time, so I need support at school and rely on our counselors and social workers. But when I am competing with 600 other students on those social workers' caseloads, it's difficult for me to get the support we all need and deserve. In addition, every bit of evidence will tell you that smaller class sizes are what is best for students. But each year, our classes get more and more crowded. We need fewer students in each class so students can feel engaged and appreciated in the classroom. We all want to feel happy when we are at school. We learn best when we have what we need. No matter what you look like or your background, you deserve to feel safe. Across our city, I hear students and educators fighting for these needs. When change happens in my classroom, the teacher always has students involved. Why aren't you all working with students and teachers through these changes? Why haven't students been asked by district leaders what safety protocols students want to see in place this year? What is it going to take for you all to engage those people who make MPS happen, students and educators? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sean Leyden.
My name is Sean Leyden. I'm a Minneapolis resident living in the Whittier neighborhood. I'm an ESP and president of our ESP union. I'm speaking tonight to draw your attention to a letter that I wrote and sent yesterday outlining our ESP union priorities for consideration on how to use federally allocated art dollars. We're calling out for the expansion of resources to help move interested ESP into the teacher and RSP field by getting us into Grow Your Own and similar programs, which have successfully increased the number of teachers of color and indigenous teachers. In addition, we must focus on how to improve outcomes for students and build welcoming and respectful school communities by looking at how we utilize all 1,300 ESPs in our day-to-day work, that work which has an outsized impact on our students and school communities. As our district undergoes a new series of changes from the implementation of the CDD to the creation of a new school climate framework, there are more ways that we must be thinking about how to include ESPs in building out our school systems. School improvement plans, climate framework, academic and social-emotional goals, reducing time out of class for students, and more are the critical work that our district is undertaking that often is partially or completely missing the voices of ESP in planning, preparation, and ultimately, implementation. Every adult in our school has a role to play in educating our students. That is why it is critical to expand collaboration and planning time between licensed and unlicensed staff, so that educators, all educators, are deeply grounded in best practices in the work of our schools' classrooms. We need to include all staff in building-wide decision-making and discussions, because that's how we're going to get buy-in from students, communities, and staff into these important and critical new decisions that we're making on how to improve our schools in the days to come. And I think if we use that opportunity to change our decision-making process, we'll have a greater impact after all those dollars are spent as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay West.
Hi. I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Lindsay West. I'm a teacher, a parent of a student in Minneapolis Public Schools, an African-American and an indigenous person, and an elected leader of the Teachers Union. I'm here today to focus your attention on one question in particular. Why aren't we including teachers? Over 90% of the teachers in Minneapolis are members of the Teachers Union, yet the union has not been involved in any decision-making with regards to the COVID-19 Return to School Safety Plan. While we hear MPS say, "Teachers were involved in this process," they are gaslighting you. Cherry-picking a few non-union members or former teachers is not including us. Telling teachers and our union leadership after decisions have been made is not including teachers. We need to stop gaslighting the greater Minneapolis community. We should have not, we should have been involved in every moment leading up to the school year with regards to the decision-making process, not left wondering, "Are we safe? Are our students safe?" We need to have real conversations around decision-making with, with the teachers who are on the front lines. Elementary teachers are returning to classrooms of 35 students who cannot be vaccinated due to age. Social workers, who are expected to support 700-plus students, students who will come with varying degrees of trauma brought on by COVID, the CDD, and much more. Why does this district fail to consult and utilize one of its best resources? We were the ones in the buildings, in the classrooms, on the front lines, the ones who can tell you, "This may look good on paper, but this is what actually works." In closing, this is an opportunity to do more than false platitudes. Use your power to force the issue. Let's bring the teachers who are working with students to the table and come up with a safety plan that is collectively created. Finding common ground may not be easy, but when we work together in a meaningful way, we can achieve more. We can do right by our students, staff, and families. So I ask you to ask yourself, why aren't we including teachers?
Thank you. Edward Barlow.
Okay, greetings, one and all. My name is Edward Barlow. I'm a music teacher at Anwatt Middle School. I have taught for 37 years, with 32 of those years in Minneapolis. I am an MFT board member and a bargaining team member. My speech will be in prose. For those who oppose such a thing, please be patient as I let my personal truth reign. The district stated a desire to pursue and retain people of color they hire. Trying to assess their progress has turned into a big mess. Since March 5th, we asked for data to see what's greater, words that are said or staff we have bled. Waiting until recently doesn't allow us to analyze data efficiently. You do the math. That kind of delay doesn't put us on the right path. Educators in search of a school district to land realize there are 18 other districts that will pay them more than you plan. I'm sure this is something I should mention in your effort to obtain retention. In regards to COVID, what's the hesitation? We need protocols and processes quick. Children are getting infected across the nation, and our students will get sick. Every child has limitless potential and gifts for our society. It is time to protect them and their families from a perspective of sobriety. On whom can we depend? If the school staff are also on the mend from the virus we are trying to defend, they have families too. To lose a parent or family member is a bite too difficult to chew, and this is all within your purview. Our students need to be places of inquiry and delight, loving places with fairness and equity in sight. With arts and learning abound, this is where I want my students and our students to be found. Thank you.
Thank you. That was impressive, Mr. Barlow. Thank you. I want to thank everybody who took the time to share their perspectives with us tonight. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Graff, who will give us some opening remarks for the night's evening, this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening, board members, Student Representative Gabor Meskell, and members of the public. I'm happy to see each of you here this evening for our first full in-person board meeting in nearly 15 months. As we prepare for a full-scale return to in-person learning, just to remind all of you, our first day with students will be grades, first through 12th grade, is on Wednesday, September 8th, and our pre-K and kindergarten students return on September 10th. Tonight, Chair Ellison and directors, I want to use my report to provide a preliminary back-to-school readiness update, and we'll share more comprehensive information with you throughout the month and into September. But there are a few pieces I want to highlight for you and our parents and community, because they are significant. First, I think most of us had hoped that we'd be on the other side of COVID-19 pandemic and that we would be entering the new school year with low rates of transmission, high rates of vaccination, and no mask mandates, but certainly, that's not where we are at this time. We are seeing the rates around the city of Minneapolis increasing, particularly among the unvaccinated, and there are a number of, measurable number of other cases that are happening with those who are vaccinated. So last week, we announced that our plan would be to move forward with an abundance of caution and follow the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health, requiring that face coverings be worn inside all of our MPS schools and sites. And so I appreciate the attention to that mandate that we have now. Face coverings are also continued to be required by the CDC on public transportation, which includes school buses. As well, we're following other virus mitigation strategies and are urging everyone who is medically able to, please go out and get their vaccine. Our goal is to have a comprehensive full guidance for staff posted on our website within the next 10 days, so we're working to finalize that information. I also want to bring attention to some shortages that we have in transportation. in transportation in particular. We've connected with peer districts in Minnesota and across the country, and we've found that the pandemic has exacerbated an already difficult labor market, especially for positions that must work in person. For us, that means we are amplifying our push to fill vacancies for bus drivers, custodial staff, nutrition services staff. So my 30-second commercial to anyone who is listening is that if you know individuals who are responsible, reliable, and want to provide excellent service and support of the education of Minneapolis Public School students, please have them go to our website and apply. We have salary and comprehensive benefits as well as a great MPS family to join. We also have a variety of classroom and support staff roles that people may also want to consider. As I mentioned earlier, I want to focus a little bit on one area, and that's transportation. Minneapolis Public Schools and about 80% of school districts across the nation continue to face a shortage of school bus drivers. As a result, as we head into classes this fall, it's likely we will experience challenges with our busing. Students could experience some route delays that may result in them being late to school on some of those days. I also want to bring to the attention of families, you should be aware that buses will be routed to be filled. So social distancing will not always be possible. However, as I mentioned earlier, we will be having our mask requirement for students who are on school buses. We will be communicating with families to encourage those who can transport their students on their own to do so or to arrange transportation with friends and neighbors to ensure that the students without that option can get to school. And I want to recognize that not all of our families will have the resources to transport children to school. And we very much want to provide bus transportation to anyone who needs it. We are continuing to look for creative solutions. In 2019, we raised, we worked to raise the hourly wage, and we began paying candidates with training for their CDL license, school bus and passenger endorsements in order to increase our driver recruitment. And earlier this year, when a portion of the students returned to the classroom during the pandemic, we were able to offer travel stipends to families who transported their own eligible students. Of course, only 78 of those families who were eligible participated in the program. And so we know that that's not a significant number, but we'll again be looking at that as a possible way to address this area. We're also working with other districts at the legislative level to raise awareness of the driver shortage. So there will be more to come in the next few days and weeks, but I wanted to make sure that everyone had at least the context and the background information about the challenges that we're facing for the upcoming weeks and the start of the school year. I also want to bring to your attention information around our educational benefits. Over the next couple of months, you'll hear a lot of conversations about our desire to have parents complete the application for educational benefits. And educational benefits are about much more than making students have access to nutritious meals during the school day for no or low cost. Educational benefits also channel critical funding for our schools, to our schools, for all students. When 100% of the applications are complete, our school funding is maximized, and students' academic and learning supports can better be met. We do know that all the data that's collected is confidential, and so we hope that all parents who might be eligible take the time to complete the application. And we met earlier this week with our school administrators, and we'll continue to work with our school staff so that they can be informed and help parents answer questions on this very important process. And I also want to draw your attention to our new online school that is kindergarten through 12th grade as an option for students and families who have found that their students prefer distance learning or they're not quite ready to return to in-person school this fall. The school is still accepting registrations for this fall. However, if students and families are already enrolled in an MPS school and chose to enroll or choose to enroll in the MPS online school, they must unenroll for their current school. So MPS school, online school, is like any other school with a community of students, teachers, and staff who are dedicated to the academic and social emotional needs of students. Just some details about the online school and what is offered for them. First and foremost, we will have meals available for our students. School meal boxes will be available for eligible families that live within the MPS transportation boundaries. Students are also eligible to play sports at their designated attendance zone, excuse me, designated attendance zone schools. Special education services are available through our online school. Mental health services will be provided. And all general education and special education Federal Settings 1 and 2 requests are being processed and accepted. Student placements for our Federal Setting 3 would need to go through our Special Education Department as part of the process. And there's a lot more details that I can share, but I just want to conclude by foreshadowing two items on the agenda this evening. First is I'd like to celebrate the fact that our district is moving forward with a resolution tonight, which the board will have in front of it tonight for vote, to formalize Juneteenth as a recognized district holiday. And I'm excited that we continue to be at the forefront on such matters. Also, tonight, we're asking the board to adopt our district e-learning plan. And this plan is important as it will allow us to maintain instructional time during inclement weather days, which we know are a real likelihood here in Minnesota. And we're confident that this plan will work well for us in part because of the significant increase in student devices that were secured during our distance learning practice that we had through the pandemic this past several months. So Chair Ellison, this concludes my remarks for this evening, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you Superintendent Graff. Next, Board members, we're going to vote on a few items. First, on our list is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes routine items that do not involve major policy, budget, or taxing decisions, bond awards, or items related to the superintendent's contract or evaluation. Director Caprini, can I please get a motion? So moved. May I please get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Our next item is a resolution establishing Juneteenth, like Superintendent says, as a district holiday beginning in 2022. Can I get, please get a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the resolution labeled as 2021-0041, establishing Juneteenth as a district holiday, has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. That motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Next on our agenda is a resolution approving the 2021-2022 school year e-learning day plan. I know this is sometimes gets a bad rap as the snow day killer. So I'll note for the record that as much as I love snow days, this is an important tool to use so that we can have, potentially avoid having school in June, in those hottest months, if we have a crazy weather year. Can I please get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. This resolution's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Our final action item is a set of policy changes that had their first reading when we met back in June. These changes recommended by the board's Policy Committee are related to student and staff data as well as the district handles public data requests. Can I please get a motion to approve this resolution which repeals Policy 1040 and adopts three new policies, 3504, 4200, and 5690?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Approval of the resolution carries. Our final item, got lost, sorry. It's a time for directors